From local city councils to Capitol Hill, agents who are Realtors are standing up for what's right. We are here protecting private property rights, here advocating for the issues that affect our neighborhoods, here championing fair and equitable housing for all because Realtors are bound by a code of ethics, driven to serve our communities. We're here for it all. We're here for you. Realtors are members of the National Association of Realtors, and that's who we are.
Now, the Place Four Abilene City Council Candidate Forum on KTab.
Well, good evening and welcome to the 2023 Abilene City Council Candidate Forum sponsored by the Abilene Association of Realtors. I'm Manny Diaz. Tonight, we welcome the Abilene City Council candidates from Place Three and Four. We will have two segments for you tonight in which the Place Four candidates will go first. The general election ballot, according to the City of Abilene election website, will determine which candidate goes first. The candidates will have 60 seconds, and 60 seconds only, to answer questions before a bell is rang, signaling the reading of the next question. Before we get started, here's a brief message from Abilene Chamber of Commerce President and CEO Doug Peters.
Hi, I'm Doug Peters with the Abilene Chamber of Commerce. First, I want to thank you for taking the time to tune in this evening to our second of two candidate forums for the upcoming city election on May 6th. Our first featured candidates for the Office of Mayor, which if you missed, you can catch on the Chamber's YouTube channel, and tonight, we bring to you those who are vying for your vote to serve on Abilene City Council. Tonight's broadcast would not be possible without the tremendous support of our media partners, KTab TV and BigCountryHomepage.com. For 115 years, the Abilene Chamber has been committed to helping to improve our area's economy and the quality of life for our citizens, made possible by our growing membership and hundreds of volunteers among them. Whether it's business advocacy, military affairs, tourism, arts, urban revitalization, or our thriving network of young professionals, our core function is for businesses to work together and our longstanding divisions committed to working cooperatively and collaboratively to help our community to be the very best version of itself. Exercising your right to vote is important, and your ability to make an informed decision is paramount to our strong community. Again, thank you to our candidates who are willing to serve and for being with us this evening, to our media partners for facilitating this live broadcast, and to each of the more than 1,200 area businesses who help power the Chamber's growing membership. Abilene's best days lie before her, and we're grateful for the role you play in helping us to realize her potential. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. We begin with our first question of the night. Gentlemen, are you ready?
We're ready.
Let's go. Workers can choose to live anywhere. What are your dreams and/or visions to improve Abilene's quality of life and make Abilene the place to live, play, and work? Brian, you first.
I'm sorry. So first of all, the opportunity to attract workforce depends on making Abilene a great place to live, and that's dependent on a lot of intangibles. Some of it is entertainment, some of it is opportunity for business and jobs, some of it is walking trails, or the quality of streets, or schools. So we have to approach this as a partnership with our private partners to make sure that all of those aspects are addressed and that we're listening to the people who are going to want to move here. We have to make it an attractive place for people to want to come to.
All righty. Mr. Beard, workers can choose to live anywhere. What are your dreams and/or visions to improve Abilene's quality of life and make Abilene the place to live, play, and work?
Yeah, I think Abilene is absolutely a place that is attractive. Even my own children are returning to Abilene, which is a good sign. I think you've got affordable housing, low cost of living, in many ways, a cool kind of community vibe. Love the downtown vibe, what's happened. I think our downtown association's done a great job to really enhance the downtown area. We love going down there now. Those kinds of things, parks, man, having things like that splash pads that we've added, some things that have happened in Abilene that make it attractive, and I think that will enhance some of these young workers to come back. And I believe with all my heart that there's a very good reason to make Abilene your home. We have for three decades, and because of that very thing, so we've loved living here, and I believe others will as well.
All righty. Question number two. What is your long-term strategy for Abilene's streets and getting them repaired? Mr. Yates?
So the strategy for this is not to replicate what we've done in the past. So in the past, we neglected to fund our streets at a level that would keep them functional and repaired at the level that we would want them. I think our street maintenance fee is going the right direction because that money can only be used for streets. I don't love that as a taxation mechanism, even though it's not technically a tax, but not everyone has a municipal services bill, and so it doesn't get to all the users. There are other solutions that are possibly out there, but for now, I think we need to leave this in place and discuss how to tweak it, and then we can look long-term, possibly for other solutions.
Okay. Mr. Beard, the question to you. What is your long-term strategy for Abilene's streets and getting them repaired?
Yeah, so I would say, first of all, when you go back to 2017, at that point, I think around $750,000 were spent on our streets. The city maintenance fee, which was implemented since 2018, we've seen 10 to 12 million. I think the city council's done a pretty good job to get the streets, begin to get the streets where they need to be. 25% of our streets are being addressed now. However, that's still woefully short. I don't think that a bond issue is a good idea, in my personal opinion. I do think, though, we'll have to get creative on looking at our budget, finding ways to allocate money toward our streets. Obviously, we grow economically, we grow our tax base. Again, that's a revenue that could be used then toward enhancing our streets and getting them where they need to be, so.
All righty. The question back to you, Mr. Yates, the third question. Grade the current city council A through F, A being the highest grade and F being the lowest grade in the area of transparency, and give examples.
Okay, so it's always hazardous to grade people, especially when you're aspiring to the position, but I would give them an A minus. How's that? It's an opportunity to communicate. They could have, in some cases, taken a little more initiative to push out information about things that have changed, but if you go look, all the information about all the different programs that are out there, the budget, the bond issues, the elections, all of that is available on the city website, and they do a pretty good job of making it clear what they're about to vote on and what they have voted on, and I think they've done a really good job.
The question to you, Mr. Beard. Grade the current city council A through F, A being the better grade, F being the lowest grade in the area of transparency, and give examples.
Yeah, so I would differ with my opponent on that. I would give a C plus on transparency. There are issues that I think are concerning, one being, you know, you have an 8:30 time for your city council meetings. It used to be in the afternoon, and I loved that that came up in the mayor debate. I think that's an issue we're not hearing from folks. I think the issue with the walking quorum makes it tough for folks like the Firefighter Association. I've met with those guys. They do a meet and confer with the city council, but it's not with the city council, it's with the city manager. And so there's some disconnect there. They appreciate the city council, but they feel like there's a disconnect there and a lack of transparency. Sometimes it might be there, and as I see that, I think that is a concern. And for me, I would want to see some changes there and more transparency added to the position, for sure.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Beard. All right, back to Mr. Yates. Question number four. Are there parts of the city budget that should be cut significantly, and if so, give an example?
Okay, there's not. We do a pretty good job of managing our money, and about 2/3 of the budget is people, and we're not overstaffed by any stretch. As a matter of fact, some measures show us that we're understaffed compared to other comparable-sized cities. So there's not a lot of room to play in the budget with what's left as far as cutting the budget. Certainly, if there's wasteful areas, if there are things that are not producing the effects that they're supposed to produce, yeah, we can talk about those. Those are definitely on the table, but I don't think you're going to see large gains from our budget cuts, and I think we just need to kind of keep what we've got.
Okay. Question number four to you, Mr. Beard. Are there parts of the city budget that should be cut significantly, and if so, please give an example?
Well, on that note, I think I would agree more with Brian. When you consider 70% of our budget goes to first responders, that's money well spent. It's going to be hard to kind of go in and cut enough in areas of budget to make that a viable option to whether you want to come in and invest in another area or whatever. I think that that's not necessarily going to work by cutting the budget. I know as a pastor, we have a budget that we run off of, and there are times that we have to look where there's excess and make those adjustments. And so I think looking at that, I think overall, our budget's in pretty good shape. I mean, there are certainly things that can be looked at. I think we always should be looking at it, making adjustments, making sure that the money that's being spent is being spent in the best appropriate way for the city. We're accountable to the city for how that money's spent, so.
Okay. Next on to question number five. Mr. Yates, what can the city of Abilene, or what can the Abilene City Council do for DIUS Air Force Base?
So the relationship with DIUS is famous, that Abilene supports the airmen that are stationed there, and it's one of the reasons the Air Mobility Command renamed their Best Community Support Award to the Abilene Trophy. So we have a reputation and a history of supporting our airmen. From a city council standpoint, you can't just mandate that people love the airmen at the base. That's not a law we can pass, but what we can do is pay attention to what the Air Force thinks is important as far as how we support their base. And there's a program called Five and Thrive that the Air Force uses to evaluate community support. There's paying attention to the B-21 bed down and the construction that's going to go ahead of that, and making sure our infrastructure is going to support that.
Okay. Mr. Beard, question number five. What can the city council do for DIUS Air Force Base?
Well, I think certainly be informed. You know, the people that make decisions about DIUS or the people in Washington DC have been blessed to have a great relationship with Congressman Jody Arrington and his Chief of Staff, and I've questioned them on what needs to be done, what can we do as a city to make sure that mission stays viable, and I've got some great input from that. So I think that communication's very important. Certainly, I think another issue is allowing, giving school choice to these airmen as they bring their families here. That's an important issue, as was related to me by his staff. And then the other is the issue of reciprocity, that if an airmen comes here and he has a wife that says a profession maybe in New York City, then she wouldn't be subject to the New York City or New York tax code. She could actually be subject to a Texas tax code. So things like that, I think the city government, city council can come in and weigh in on those kind of things to help DIUS families.
All righty, let's move on to question number six. This one for Mr. Yates. Do you believe the Abilene City Council has a role in social issues?
Okay, the city government, or government at any level, is responsible for upholding the Constitution and the principles that are put forth in that, and I believe that. I took the oath. I served 25 years in the Air Force. I am a staunch believer in constitutional rights, and I think there is a difference between having community values and imposing community values. And I think that it is never the role of a government at any level to either compel or restrict the behavior of its citizens, and so we have to be very cautious about the rules that we make, well-intended though they might be, that would put people in a place where they're not able to do the things that they're free to do.
Question number six to you, Mr. Beard. Do you believe the Abilene City Council has a role in social issues?
Yeah, obviously, kind of dear to my heart was what we did to pass the Sanctuary City for the Unborn Ordinance. Many agreed, many disagreed on that issue, but the issue was that as we went through the process of getting that before the voters of Abilene, it wasn't just a city council decision. In fact, the city council, I think wisely passed that on to the voter after we got the number of signatures we needed to put it forward. And so it went before the citizens, we gave the citizens their voice, they spoke and said, this is a social issue that's important. As we've done surveys amongst our likely voters, 57-plus percent have said that social issues are important, and I think just to kind of push that aside and not pay attention to that would be wrong. And I think we have a great example in the Sanctuary City for the Unborn Ordinance that the city of Abilene spoke up and said, this is what they want. We want to protect the unborn in our city. We want to make abortion illegal in our city.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, for answering those six questions there. We are now moving on to our rapid-fire segment, the questions in which I read to both candidates will prompt nothing more than a yes or no response. Let's get to the first question, and this one is directed to Mr. Yates. If you had been on the Abilene City Council during the COVID crisis, would you have supported the city's actions? Remember, this is only a single yes or no response.
Yes.
Yes.
Both yeses. Okay. Remember, we are not adding context to this. These are just simple yes or no responses. All right, rapid-fire question number two. Do you think our economic development dollars are being spent well?
Yes.
Yes.
You had to think about that one, Scott. All right, rapid-fire question number three. Do you think enough has been done to revitalize downtown Abilene? Mr. Yates?
No.
Yes.
Our first competing answer there. Okay. Moving on to our final rapid-fire question here. Do you agree with the street maintenance fee? Mr. Yates?
Yes.
Yes.
Both of you agree. Okay. Well, it is now time to hear our closing statements from both candidates, Mr. Yates and Mr. Beard. We'll each have 90 seconds to give their closing remarks, beginning with Mr. Scott Beard.
Yeah, so, you know, this is the people's office, the city council position. It's not my office, it's not anyone else's office. It really is the people's office. I would hope, as a servant leader, given that fact, that my door would always be open to the people, that there would be the issue of transparency, that there would be that connection, that there would be those relationships built. I get that there are issues and there are things that we'll have to work through, but at the end of the day, it's the people's office. I feel certainly qualified. There are those that would argue that as a pastor, that wouldn't be a good idea for you to be in this kind of position. I don't agree. I'm well-qualified, given the amount of time and effort put into building a local church from 50 folks, 50 folks, we got here 31 years ago, to over 800 in active membership, million-dollar budget, working with staff, working with conflict management, all the things that come with building a business, which a church, believe it or not, some may not know this, but it really is a business. And so I bring that unique qualification to the city council. At the end of the day, I would hope that, one of my favorite authors, a guy named John Maxwell, John Maxwell says this, "The best leaders there are those that lead without leverage." They are those that lead not because folks are forced to follow them, but because they want to follow them. And I believe as a pastor, I have that advantage to lead without leverage. I've got those that volunteer and give their time to our church, and I believe in the same way we'll. So I hope for your vote at the end of the day.
The first bell that has been ringed this evening.
I made it.
Yes, sir. Mr. Yates, 90 seconds to you and your closing remarks.
So, Abilene is the city that we've chosen. When I retired from the Air Force as a colonel, after 25 years, Stacy and I decided that this was the place that we wanted to make our forever home, and it was because the great people here, and the environment, and the sense of togetherness that being an Abilenean offers. I've got the experience from running a small city, essentially as the Mission Support Group Commander at DIUS Air Force Base. I've spent time with the Chamber of Commerce, learning about the business world, and then five years with a small business, working every day to make sure that invoicing and payroll and scheduling was taken care of. I think I'm uniquely qualified to be able to step into the city council and immediately become effective at making wise policy that serves the citizens of Abilene. If someone was to ask me, why would you run? I would say, I have the experience, the desire, the available time, and the temperament, thus reflected by the endorsements by the Police Officers Association, the Realtors Association, and the Homeowners Association. I have their support, and I'm asking for your vote on May the 6th for me, Place Four.
All right. Mr. Brian Yates, Mr. Scott Beard. Thank you, gentlemen. That concludes our first half of the 2023 Abilene City Council Candidate Forum with candidates for Abilene City Council Place Four. As we prepare the stage for our next set of candidates looking to represent Place Three, we'll go to the KTab Newsroom with Bob Bartlett and Joni McKinnon.
There you go. So we're not going to say that. All right, thank you, Manny. All right, we were in here listening in.
Yes, it was very exciting, about 25 minutes for the two candidates for Place Four on the Abilene City Council while we're getting the Place Three candidates in place, and we continue with Manny. We can have a little recap of some of what you may have heard here in the last little while.
Sure, so we heard from Brian Yates, retired Lieutenant Colonel, who also serves as a Vice President for Military Affairs Committee. He was speaking as well. And then we also heard from Scott Beard, who is the pastor for Fountain Gate Fellowship Church, an advocate for making Abilene the Sanctuary City for the unborn. So both gentlemen are pretty familiar with the key city, had some strong views about what they would like to see seen, had some rapid-fire questions, yes or no answers.
And they agreed on some issues, but certainly there were others where they were...
Sure.
They differed.
That's okay. So the first question of the night then started advocating for the key city, and that was asking those candidates, so what, workers, they can actually choose to live anywhere. So what are your dreams and/or visions to improve Abilene's quality of life and make Abilene the place to live, play, and work? So let's take a look at what Brian Yates had to say.
The opportunity to attract workforce depends on making Abilene a great place to live, and that's dependent on a lot of intangibles. Some of it is entertainment, some of it is opportunity for business and jobs, some of it is walking trails, or the quality of streets, or schools. So we have to approach this as a partnership with our private partners to make sure that all of those aspects are addressed and that we're listening to the people.
When you go back to 2017, at that point, I think around $750,000 were spent on our streets. The city maintenance fee, which was implemented since 2018, we've seen 10 to 12 million. I think the city...
All right, so that was Brian Yates, a little bit of Scott Beard as well, so I think you've got the second question.
Yes, I do. One of the other questions that a lot of you drivers commute back and forth to work every day in Abilene about, one of the biggest complaints we always hear is about the condition of the streets in Abilene, and the question is, what is your long-term strategy of Abilene's streets and getting them repaired? And we start with Scott Beard.
When you go back to 2017, at that point, I think around $750,000 were spent on our streets. The city maintenance fee, which was implemented since 2018, we've seen 10 to 12 million. I think the city council's done a pretty good job to get the streets, begin to get the streets where they need to be. 25% of our streets are being addressed now. However, that's still woefully short. I don't think that a bond issue is a good idea, in my personal opinion. I do think, though, we'll have to get creative on looking at our budget.
I would give them an...
All right, so for our third question, we're going to recap tonight. It was giving a grade, yep, to the current city council on a scale of A to F, specifically in the area of transparency, and give some examples. So here's what each of those candidates said.
An A minus. How's that? It's an opportunity to communicate. They could have, in some cases, taken a little more initiative to push out information about things that have changed.
I would give a C plus on transparency. There's some disconnect there. They appreciate the city council, but they feel like there's a disconnect there and a lack of transparency. Sometimes it might be there.
All right, very good.
We appreciate both Scott Beard and Brian Yates being with us tonight, candidates for Place Four on the Abilene City Council.
All right, so our news director, Manny Diaz, he is back in the studio standing by with the four candidates, ready for Place Three.
Now, the Place Three Abilene City Council Candidate Forum on KTab.
Welcome back to the 2023 Abilene City Council Candidate Forum sponsored by the Abilene Association of Realtors. I'm Manny Diaz. We now move into our questions for the candidates for Place Three. Cynthia Alvidres, James Sargent, Shante Fleming, and Blaze Reagan. Remember, each candidate will have 60 seconds to respond to each question. When the bell rings, we will move on to the next question. Ladies and gentlemen, y'all ready? All righty. Question one, this one to you, Ms. Alvidres. According to the Abilene Conventions and Visitors Bureau, the average Abilene taxpayer saves roughly $512 per month and over $6,100 annually because of tourism. How would you support more visitors to take more burden off local taxpayers?
Hi, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Cynthia Alvidres. I am from Abilene, Texas, and I have been here all my life. The last five or six years, I have advocated on behalf of the taxpayer, and as you all know, we are basically getting stolen from. When you look at our budgets, we've actually had leftover monies from our budgets placed in our minor improvement funds that have basically been used for the establishment's business opportunities. And so if you have a chance, while these others are speaking, you might want to Google my name real quick and find out that I'm basically the only person on this stage that's going to fight for you. So if you want someone to fight for you, if you want your taxes cut and you want your taxes to be allotted in a way that's going to benefit you, you're going to want to vote Cynthia for Place Three.
All right, question two for you, Mr. Sargent. According to the Abilene Conventions and Visitors Bureau, the average Abilene taxpayer saves roughly $512 per month, over $6,100 annually because of tourism. How would you support more visitors to take more burden off local taxpayers?
Yes, absolutely. So I would start with being able to advertise more so what's going on in our city. We're blessed to have a great community, it's thriving. We had a lot of activities that go on, but even going back 15 years, Abilene has not done a great job of advertising what's going on, but not just what, but all the opportunities to serve, to volunteer, and also, we need to take care of what we already have. We need to take care of our infrastructure that's in place. We need to be transparent with our taxpayers, with our citizens of what's going on, why it's going on, and where our tax dollars are being spent. So vote James Sargent.
All righty. Ms. Fleming, according to the Abilene Convention and Visitors Bureau, the average Abilene taxpayer saves roughly $512 per month and over $6,100 annually because of tourism. How would you support more visitors to take more burden off local taxpayers?
Hello, so for me, I would look into what we already have in place. We have AYSA, they have the fields that are being built there, the flat fields, bringing in tourism for the kids to do tournaments, also trying to bring back our football. We have a lot of kids that are traveling outside of Abilene, definitely could bring that money back into our city, our downtown. We have the hotel that's there. We are looking at bringing in funds there. So just working together, trying to figure out what works best for the city.
Okay. Mr. Reagan, according to the Abilene Conventions and Visitors Bureau, the average Abilene taxpayer saves roughly $512 per month and over $6,100 annually because of tourism. How would you support more visitors to take more burden off local taxpayers?
Manny, thanks for having us. So there's several things that we can do to bring in outside dollars into Abilene, and that's the goal, is to bring in outside dollars to Abilene, so we're not just circulating our own money. And so we do that in a number of ways. I met with Robert at the Visitors Bureau. I was very impressed with the direction that he's bringing to that bureau, trying to raise awareness for the activities that we've got going on, and to raise awareness of Abilene outside of our city, to bring in outside travelers. We also can help bring in outside dollars by developing that I-20 corridor. So a lot of people outside of Abilene, the only image they have of Abilene is what they see on I-20, and they don't pull over, they don't stop, they don't pull into any local businesses. And so developing that I-20 corridor can really bring in a lot of outside dollars, which allows us to fund our programs through those tourism dollars rather than shifting the entire burden on our local businesses and on our residents. So I would really like to see that I-20 corridor developed so that we can shift that burden and really grow and keep Abilene getting better.
All righty. Question number two, this one to you, Ms. Alvidres. Specifically, what would you do to make Abilene more business-friendly?
Hi, again, Cynthia Alvidres. For those of you that don't know, again, we have had leftover monies from the budget, and it is...
and it is placed into a fund called the Minor Improvement Fund. Also, we were forced to pay for a hotel in which we told the city in a bond that we did not want. So in order to continue to move forward in a way that's going to benefit everyone, what we need to do is we need to get individuals off the council, and we need to put individuals in there who are going to fight for the taxpayer. You can sit here and, you know, create nonprofits that, you know, say that they're going to help youth with their sports and things like that, but whenever you're leasing land to them for only a dollar a year, which is what we do with AYSA, and you have individuals here who are ignorant with the finances that the city has, you're not going to benefit that way. So you need to vote people in who are informed, and it's obvious that Ms. Fleming is not informed with the finances.
Mr. Sargent. Specifically, what would you do to make Abilene more business-friendly?
You know, as a small business owner, I've dealt with this firsthand. For over nine years, I've owned and operated my own business here in Abilene, even through the pandemic. And one of the things we continue to see is that there's not effective communication, there's not effective transparency. We'll go to one office, and they say, well, you got to go talk to someone else for this issue. And you go talk to that person, they send you back, or they say they don't know. So we can improve that. We can improve by removing some of the red tape and hurdles that small businesses have to go through to open a business, make a more streamlined process. Another thing we do on the city website is we can do online payment for permits. The only online payment system we have throughout our city is for the water department. If you do that online, it's less time we have to take away from our business to take care of those steps and measures, that we can continue focus on growing our own business and see some support from the city.
Ms. Shante Fleming. Specifically, what would you do to make Abilene more business-friendly?
Well, first off, I would like to see more competitive pay. I think that is a really big issue after talking to so many of our residents here. The reason why they leave is a lack of things to do and non-competitive pay. So what I would like to do is focus on that. Also, being a business owner, focus on the things that we don't have. Abilene is growing, it's thriving, but there's still a few things that we can use here to make it even better. So we want to focus on the people that are striving to have their businesses here, but also bringing in new businesses.
Okay. Mr. Reagan. Specifically, what would you do to make Abilene more business-friendly?
I think there's a lot of things we can do. So I'm a business attorney. I focus on business law and estate law, retirement law. And so I'm getting to see the inner workings of 200, 300, 400 businesses here, what they're struggling with. And I think that gives me a great insight, not into just one, not into just law practice, or, you know, I had a brewery on the side with my five brothers. I have that kind of insight, but I also have the insight into 300, 400 businesses across different industries to see what they're struggling with, what their permit process is like, and where the holdups are. And I think that's going to be great insight that I can bring to the city council. You know, what we struggled with opening the brewery was grease traps, and I talked about it on my campaign kickoff speech. But grease traps, we were required to get, but it was unnecessary. And so I think every industry has those unnecessary things that they have to do, and I'd like to streamline that code to make it more business-friendly. I'd also like to do an incubator accelerator here in Abilene to help retain our graduates here, so they can start their prototypes, their apps here, rather than bleeding them to Dallas.
All righty. Question number three, back to Ms. Cynthia Alvidres. Are there parts of the city budget that should be cut significantly? And if so, give an example.
Regarding the budget, the only thing that really needs to be cut out of our budget is the establishment's sticky fingers. If you aren't aware, we have individuals who are tapping into our budget. When you have leftover tax dollars that are placed into a minor improvement fund and taxpayers are forced to pay for an 80-some-odd-million-dollar hotel, only to find out that their water and their sewer bonds have been sold on the market, is not fair. So the only way that you're ever going to attract any kind of businesses or get anyone to stay here is when you're able to get the establishment off the council. The reason I say that, we have three individuals who are financially supported by Abilene Christian University, and Abilene Christian University has been allocated a lot of our public tax dollars. And if you look around the north side of town, the only part of town that's flourishing is the northeast side. Anthony Williams works there. Thank God he's not running again, but we still have Kyle McAllister and Shane Price's wives who are employed by Abilene Christian University. So those are the things that need to be cut out of the budget, are the establishment's fingers off of our tax dollars, and once you do that, we'll be fine.
To Mr. Sargent, are there parts of the city budget that should be cut significantly? And if so, please give an example.
Absolutely. So one of the examples would be the downtown hotel. I know it's been a hot topic, but you read last year's budget form, it says the city allotted out of private donations and excess general fund balances $29.1 million, says downtown hotel. But then the mayor comes out and says it was an $81 million project. Well, exactly where, how much of that was tax dollars? And then you also look at the shelter, the all kinds animal shelter. The land around the current shelter's been for sale for quite some time, but yet they spent extra money, millions of dollars, to move it to South 11th. So I think we can approve, we can make cuts on the things that the citizens do not want. They did not vote for it. They shot down the hotel, and it was passed through anyway, with more funds being directed to the downtown hotel, just as current as this last city council meeting. There's one of the topics on there, sending more funds to downtown hotel, the city voted against.
Thank you, Mr. Sargent. Ms. Shante Fleming, are there parts of the city budget that should be cut significantly? And if so, give an example.
Well, I'm not sure if there are parts that should be cut. Our city council has been working hard on a lot of these different issues Abilene is facing. I was a part of the 2040 city plan, you know, we have a lot of things working behind the scenes. We have some like challenges. Our city budget can be worked on some, but I'm not sure if attacking, pointing fingers, causing blame, but since that we're here, what do we do to fix it? What is the more appropriate answer and like plan of action for us to fix this?
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. To you, Mr. Reagan. Are there parts of the city budget that should be cut significantly? And if so, please give an example.
I think we've always got to be working on efficiency and transparency. Those are problem spots for every city. It's definitely something where you want to know where your taxpayer dollars are going and what they're being spent on. Every city struggles with that, and Abilene's no different. We have to work harder on that because, as a taxpayer, I want to know where that money is going to. On the downtown hotel, you know, I'm less focused on if there's a loss, and I'm looking now, I think they're booking through 2027 for that hotel. And so I'm looking, all right, let's make sure that we're accounting for the profits from that hotel. And it's already practically built. I think it's opening in June, and so I think we should be more focused on, let's make sure that we're accounting for the profits. And the street maintenance fee is another issue that, back in 2019, I worked with a lot of business owners to get that initial first proposal way down. And so that's something that I would like to see, looking at options to phase that out practically, so that we're still improving our streets, but that the burden is not so heavy on our residents, our universities, and our businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan. All right, we now move on to question number four, and this one, back to you, Ms. Cynthia Alvidres. What is your long-term strategy for Abilene's streets and getting them repaired?
I don't think anyone on this stage can say that they have been able to allocate $20 to $25 million back to the taxpayer without ever sitting on a council or on a board. You're never going to fix your streets again as long as the establishment's fingers are in our budget. And when you have individuals over here who are trying to run for a city council position and have no plan on how to address the frivolous spending of our tax dollars, you should be concerned, that's a red flag, and those are the individuals that you don't want to vote for. We don't need another Anthony Williams on our city council. And all we have, you know, the individuals here, a lot of them are bought out. And they were bought out a long time ago. That's the last thing that we need on our city council, is another Anthony Williams with a wig on. We don't need that. We need individuals on the council who are going to stand up for the local taxpayer and make sure that the establishment is going to stop putting their fingers on our dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Alvidres. Mr. Sargent, what is your long-term strategy for Abilene's streets and getting them repaired?
As I've stated many times before, I believe we should look at staffing our streets division and giving them the personnel and equipment they need to do the street repairs, to do the long-term concrete repairs. Because every time we're subcontracting this out, we have to spend more of our tax dollars to get this work done. Now, if we pay them a comparative wage, and we can keep these personnel here in town instead of losing them to contractors or estate agency, then we can get more repairs done in a cost-effective manner. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sargent. Ms. Shante Fleming, what is your long-term strategy for Abilene's streets and getting them repaired?
So I don't want to pay the street and maintenance tax fee for a long period of time. We know that our council so far, they have been struggling with our streets for a long time. The streets here still needs a significant amount of work. Long-term, I would say a bond. There's no way to fix a street, fix these streets without a significant amount of money upfront. The street maintenance and like tax fee, that's not enough to get us where we really need to be. So if not a bond, we need to pull some people together and try to figure out what is our long-term goal, because we have to have some type of plan to fix those streets. Streets now, even driving here, they are horrible. So a long-term goal for me would be to get it on the ballot.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Mr. Reagan, what is your long-term strategy for Abilene's streets and getting them repaired?
As bad as streets are now, they are getting better. If you remember the streets from five, eight years ago, really bad. We have gotten better, as hard as that is to admit, we are getting better as far as our streets. We're at least maintaining, we've got a lot of work to do still. Long-term-wise, I think it's a multifaceted situation. Infill development is key. We keep expanding, meaning we have to keep building new roads, we have to keep funding new fire departments and new police in order to spread our coverage a little thinner, but to cover that expanded area. And so if we can instead focus development, encourage development in our inner city, kind of between downtown and far south, in between downtown and I-20, we've already got the roads, we've already got the coverage there. That way, we're not having to spend more money building new roads. We can instead focus on the existing roads, get those potholes filled and leveled out a little bit. I'd eventually like to phase out that street maintenance fee. I think that comes with growing our tax base.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan. We now move on to question number five. Back to you, Ms. Alvidres. Grade the current city council A through F, A being the highest grade and F being the lowest grade in the area of transparency, and give examples.
I think we all know how I feel about the city council. The city council gets a big fat F from Cynthia Alvidres. Reason being is because I don't like to get stolen from. And the only reason things are getting better is because we're having to fight ourself to get our streets fixed. Again, I've been able to get $20 to $25 million allotted back to the taxpayer, and I have not sat on one board. My opportunity to sit on boards has been ripped away from me, as it has you, because people are select, certain people are selected to sit on those boards, and the boards are meant to filter out the requests of the taxpayer. So ultimately, once it gets up to the city council, they get whatever it is that they want. So they get a big fat F. And again, if you want someone who's going to stand up for you, Cynthia Alvidres is who you need to vote for for Place Three. We don't need individuals who are ignorant, we don't need individuals who are bought out, we don't need individuals who are drinking the Kool-Aid. We need individuals who are going to hold the current city council accountable and fight for the taxpayer, and make sure that our tax dollars are being allotted in a way that benefits us and not the establishment or anybody else who wants to come in there and steal our monies from us.
Ms. Alvidres, thank you. Mr. Sargent, grade the current city council A through F in the area of transparency and give examples.
Absolutely. I would say more like a C. I believe there's a lot of improvement that can be made. There's some that has been made, and we're thankful for that. But you take the sanctuary city for the unborn. The amount of signatures it took and the two-year process it took, it should not have taken such effort and work from a collective group of citizens, from the larger majority of our citizens, for such a resolution to be put in place. You know, and also, you hear some candidates talking about, well, let's do the I-20 corridor, and let's spread our tax base. Okay, well, that's great, but we're growing it over here, and we're spreading ourselves too thin, and we're not taking care of what we have already. And so I think, so I think as far as transparency, it definitely needs to be improved. When you can't get direct answers on how much tax dollars are spent for our projects, then there's an issue, and there's definite improvement that needs to be made.
Thank you, Mr. Sargent. Ms. Shante Fleming, grade the current city council A through F in the area of transparency and give examples.
I'm going to give it a C. There's work to be done, there's no doubt about that. Our city council are regular Abilene citizens, me being on the planet and zoning board. There's no way for us to know every single thing, try to, you know, it takes time. But when you get people that constantly attack, constantly criticize, while you have a body of people working together, trying to do right for what's better for the whole city, not just for some, but for the whole city of Abilene, that's a large task. And even though it's not perfect, but no city is perfect. So working together and balancing things, that's one thing I stand for. Constantly attacking, but how do we fix it? How do we work together to make it a better city for all of us? That's my focus, and that's my goal.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Mr. Reagan, 60 seconds to you. Grade the current city council A through F in the area of transparency and give examples.
I don't think any city ever gets an A+ on this. This is just a hard thing for any city to do. I would give Abilene about a B. They are good whenever you reach out to individual council members or to Robert Hannah, hey, what's the status on this project? You know, where is this money going? He's open to sitting down and discussing all these different issues. I think a lot of people just don't want, either have the time or don't know that's an option. And so they're, you know, busy running their business or raising their family, and that's really where your city council member comes in, and they're your advocate, they're making sure that things are accounted for and transparent. But you're dealing with massive budgets, you're dealing with a lot of ordinances that can be complicated, and once things are funded or approved, a lot of people think, well, why isn't it built yet? And so breaking down the actual cost, where the money's going, the actual timeline, I think is a crucial role that the city council needs to play in, hey, this is the process, this is where the money's going, this is where it's going to be spent and built. And I think we need to do a better job about just explaining it in simple English.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan, just in the nick of time. Back to you, Ms. Alvidres, for our final question of the evening. Do you believe the Abilene City Council has a role in social issues?
To an extent, but, you know, stay out of my own personal business. You know, there's a line there, and there is a boundary that needs to be drawn. There's a reason you have a separation between church and state. I would like to comment on your first question that you asked. There are a lot of lies that are being told, not only from the city council, but from boards and commissions. And so to say that the taxpayer saves $500 a month and $6,000-some-odd dollars a year because we have tourism, but yet our taxes continue to rise, is contradictory in nature. And you already know, you got one person here who's going to approve a bond or want a bond, and it is coming for your wallet. So just know, you know, pay real close attention to what's being said on this stage right now, because your taxes are going to go up if you vote in certain individuals. You're not going to have people who are going to stand there and fight for you because they were already bought out years ago. Matter of fact, there's individuals on this stage right now who are bribing people via the zoning board. So those are things that you need to be aware of and things that need to come to light.
Thank you, Ms. Alvidres. Mr. Sargent, do you believe the Abilene City Council has a role in social issues?
Absolutely, to a degree. They're supposed to uphold community standards and set those in place, and also, to a degree, enforce those, yeah. It doesn't mean infringing upon the individual rights of our citizens. But what it does mean is when we have thousands of citizens saying this is what we want, or thousands of citizens saying, where are these tax dollars going from, or our voice isn't being heard, that our emails should not go unanswered, and those phone calls not responded to. I understand they're busy, but there's definitely need to be more representative of a larger segment of our society, of our community. We have many members that are busy, working hard, providing for their families, and spending what little time they have for their families and with our community, that it shouldn't be so challenging for them to get a response and some communication with our council members. Thank you.
Ms. Fleming, do you believe the Abilene City Council has a role in social issues?
I do. For me, I started in 2020. I had some city issues. I didn't know how to quite handle them, how to actually tackle them. But one thing that I did do was I went to our city council, I met with people individually, I met with them together, we went to countless council meetings. And for that, I got, my voice was always heard. I never had a issue... I never had a, had a issue with not being able to get a hold of somebody or not talking to someone. So the, the social issues that we have here, I took it to social media, I took it to the council. And we were able to get Stevenson Park totally renovated and, I mean, up and running. And it took some time, but because of that, it worked. So I do think that they played a role.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Mr. Reagan, do you believe the Abilene City Council has a role in social issues?
Absolutely. I think that they do, obviously up to a degree. You know, we want to elect people that have our shared beliefs, our traditions, our values. And then those are represented through their decisions. And so I think it's important to elect council members that are, that are honest and that act the same way in public as they do in private behind closed doors. Because some of these decisions, you know, executive sessions of the city council, they are acting behind closed doors. And so you need someone with integrity and values that's going to act the same way. And so that's how we see our values through. We don't want, you know, a single church dominating the council or saying this is the way that things have to be. Because even if you're of the same faith, you may not agree on a certain issue. And so we want to have a diverse, but we want to have the people that are making good decisions based on integrity and character.
All right, it is now time to hear our closing statements. Each will have 90 seconds to share their closing remarks, beginning with Mr. Blaze Reagan.
Thank you. So again, I'm Blaze Reagan, running for place three. I'm an attorney here. I focus on business law and estate law. And I represent a lot of businesses, a lot of startups. And so I see that community, what they're struggling with, whether it's permits, whether it's permitting, you know, zoning. I've seen a lot of those issues. I also deal with estate law, so retirement law, wills, trusts, probate. And so when it comes to retirement, Medicare, Social Security, I know what our retirees are dealing with because I'm there with them. And I want to keep Abilene a retirement-friendly city. And I want to retain our graduates from McMurray and ACU and HSU and the Fire Department and Cisco so that they have opportunities here where they don't feel they have to go to Dallas or Austin to start their businesses. I teach a business law class at McMurray this semester. And I asked my students, how many of you are planning on staying here in Abilene? And out of the 28 in both classes that I asked, zero, we're planning on staying in Abilene. And that's a stark reminder that we've got a lot of work to do to keep our graduates here. Because if we bleed our young bankers, our young technicians, our young plumbers, and, and everything we need to grow here, our retirees are less attracted to move here. And so then they'll move also to Dallas or Austin. So we've really got to grow and retain our workforce here to keep making Abilene better. And so I would ask for your vote on May 6th for Blaze Reagan.
Ms. Fleming, your closing statements, 90 seconds.
Yes. So my name is Shontae Fleming. I am running for place three, Abilene City Council. One of my biggest focuses is to balance Abilene. How can I bring balance to that? I believe that Abilene is growing. It is changing, and it's changing by force. There's nothing that we can do to stop that. But a great balance is something that I would like to provide. A retention of our citizens, competitive pay. We do know our budget needs some work, streets and maintenance, all of those things. So as a planning and zoning commissioner, I have firsthand knowledge of a lot of issues, a lot of things people are wanting to see. I want to make Abilene available and balanced for everyone, not just for certain groups or for certain people. And of course, Abilene, it is getting better. But I want to make sure that, that it gets better for everybody. Not just for some of us or certain groups, but for everybody. I want to make sure that we're doing what's best for our city, for our citizens. Of course, transparency, safety. But the main thing is just balancing things out. And what I want to do, and I think that I would provide, is that balance. I've been doing this work since 2020, had a lot of good mentors. And I'm asking for your vote on May the 6th.
Mr. Sargent, 90 seconds.
So I'm James Sargent. Spent 10 years in the military, serving our country and protecting the freedoms that are so dear to our Abilene citizens. I'm a small business owner for over nine years. So I understand the struggles and the challenges and the personal sacrifices it takes to own and operate a business and to provide for other people's families when you're not getting a pay yourself. So during COVID, I took a pay cut, sometimes not even collecting pay, so to make sure I can pay my office manager. Those are the principles in which I operate with and have operated with. I'm a family man. We've got two children through the foster system, we're preparing to adopt. And we do own a house and a property here in town. So I think that's important to note because we have people that are advocating on taxes, but they don't know what it's like because they don't own property. And there's a difference between the premise and the practice. That it is real easy to talk about change, but it's a lot more challenging to be the change. And that's what I'm looking at doing. Not only with my experience with my family, the military, and small business, but also I volunteer in many avenues, whether it be a volunteer chaplain with the local prison and helping individuals reenter into society with work and placement, but also interim volunteer chaplain with the Fire Department. And we need to make sure we take care of our retirees. There's, I've heard instances of them missing out on meals because of budget, but we're spending it on pet projects. Thank you.
Ms. Alvidres, 90 seconds.
Hi, again, Cynthia Alvidres. I'm the only individual that's standing on this stage that can sit here and say that I have fought for you, I have been fighting for you, and I will continue to fight, whether I'm on council or not. This isn't, this isn't something that I'm doing for self, self-benefit. There's two individuals here that have served their country, and I am one of them. I'm an Army veteran, so I know what selfless service is like. And not only have I given it to my country, I've given it to my local community. Again, I have saved the taxpayer $20 to $25 million. My goals on the city council is, number one, to restrict the infiltration of the establishment access to our tax dollars. Until we do that, it doesn't matter how many, how many years you raise our taxes, we're never going to fix our infrastructure, our infrastructure. Again, lowering taxes is what needs to be, needs to be done. If we have leftover monies that have been placed into our minor improvement fund, why do our taxes continue to get raised? And I could tell you another thing that I did. I was able to get the city council to freeze your property taxes or to freeze the amount of property taxes that they took away from you because of a suggestion that I made when I ran in 2020. I'm not bought out. You have individuals on this, on this stage who are bought out. And you have individuals on this stage that are sitting here telling you right now that they will raise your taxes. And let me tell you something else. You don't have to own a piece of property in this town to pay taxes. If you rent, your, your voice matters too. You don't have to own property here. You pay your landlord, and your landlord pays taxes with that. You pay a sales tax, a sales tax to the DCOA who can't even bring businesses in here so that you can actually make a good living, or you could, you could have a good wage.
Thank you, Ms. Alvidres. Please join us on bigcountryhomepage.com as we wrap up our coverage. Thank you to our candidates. Good night.
Tonight's Abilene City Council Candidate Forum was sponsored by Abilene Association of Realtors.
Well, that was the second round of our political forum tonight. We heard from the candidates for place three. They're on city council, four of them. And we're continuing our election coverage for this forum on here, as well as bigcountryhomepage.com. And we're going to hear some answers now from those four candidates running for place three on council.
That's right. The first question in the second half of our program tonight, asking candidates for place three on the city council. Again, this is the question they were all asked. According to the Abilene Convention and Visitors Bureau, the average Abilene taxpayer saves roughly $512 per month, at $6,100 annually, because of tourism. How would you support more visitors to take more burden off local taxpayers? Here's what Cynthia Alvidres and Blaze Reagan had to say.
We all know we are basically getting stolen from. When you look at our budgets, we've actually had leftover monies from our budgets placed in our minor improvement funds that have basically been used for the establishment's business opportunities.
Developing that I-20 corridor can really bring in a lot of outside dollars, which allows us to fund our programs through those tourism dollars rather than shifting the entire burden on our local businesses and on our residents.
All right. So that was the first question. So the second question asked tonight specifically, it was what would you do to make Abilene more business friendly? And here's what James Sargent and Shontae Fleming said.
So we can improve that. We can improve by removing some of the red tape and hurdles that small businesses have to go through to open a business, and make a more streamlined process.
After talking to so many of our residents here, the reason why they leave is a lack of things to do and non-competitive pay. So what I would like to do is focus on that.
And thank you to all the candidates who participated in tonight's election forum on KTab, your local election headquarters, and bigcountryhomepage.com. Also, thanks to our news, engineering, and production departments for pulling all of this together tonight and getting it on the air and on the web.
So for this full one-hour-long forum, it'll be available right here on bigcountryhomepage.com a little later on tonight. We want to thank you for joining us right here on KTab, your local election headquarters. Thank you and good night.
Good night.
Tonight's Abilene City Council Candidate Forum was sponsored by Abilene Association of Realtors.